All right, I guess it's 7:00, so we'll call the meeting to order and please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Buck?
Mayor Ziegler.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Beagle.
Here.
Councilmember Gatto.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Leader.
Here.
Councilmember Resnick.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
More present.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, any changes to the agenda, additions, subtractions?
No, sir, your honor.
Anybody up here have anything they want to add to the agenda? Okay, then we're set. First item on the agenda is approval of amendments of the July 10, 2018 regularly scheduled city council meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion, corrections, points to be made? I have a second, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. There are two items of correspondence. The first is a notice of hearing for the electric customers of DTE Electric Company, case number U-20162, and the second is a memorandum concerning emergency repairs to a police department patrol vehicle. The next item on the agenda is the first call to the public. I'll read the rules for the call to the public. The public shall address the council during the call to the public, which shall be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence and immediately after new business. The first call to the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority vote of council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves in their place of residence and shall state their reason for addressing the council, and all comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Does anybody, would anybody like to make some public statements regarding any agenda items this evening? Seeing no one, I'll close the first call to the public. Next item on the agenda is city manager reports. We have the departmental monthly reports of June 2018. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Beagle.
Thanks. I've got a couple here. One's for Tim. Under your DPW report, it says on City Hall, you worked on Pond and you rebuilt the pump. Didn't we replace all those pumps when we redid the pond over there?
We did, I believe so.
And they're already going?
There is one that went already. What we were thinking was happening was the pressure, the suction pressure drops way down after, you know, we get a lot of debris coming through the pump, and if the screen doesn't get cleaned quickly enough, it'll burn the pump. What we've done is we've got a switch that'll shut the pump off once it hits a certain pressure so we can keep the pump lasting longer.
Okay.
But they haven't, we just signed that with Kennedy. They're going to install that, you know, within the next couple of weeks. So, but we're watching it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that's what I could do.
Mr. Kennedy.
Have we upped the maintenance program on the screening of the?
Yeah, the screening, the screening, we do it three, four times a day typically, and when there's, you know, multiple, multiple, I guess, leaps and that kind of thing in there, we just couldn't catch it. And I think that's what, I really do think that's what happened on this one.
I'm just saying, you know, what it costs to have a guy come out and chase and, you know, clean the screen out versus a pump.
Right, yep. It's, it is a cost.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Resnick.
In the June 2018 water and wastewater report, it says that we had a fecal exceedance due to the power quality issues. Maybe Mac can explain, is that due to power outages or was it a, some other issue?
Sure. So we've been having some power quality, and with power quality, it affects the electronics, right? So we use a UV disinfection system, right? So that UV disinfection uses a bunch of processors and a lot of power supplies that were, have been impacted over a lot of the power issues that we've been having. So I think Thursday, the 28th of June, we experienced another issue where we had a brownout condition at the plant. Some of the primary equipment that protects that was already damaged in previous issues that we had with some power outages, and that led to unfortunately a total failure of our UV system. So from the 28th until this past Friday, we've been working with the manufacturers as well as Kennedy on basically a complete overhaul of the UV system.
So the UV system had to be replaced as a result of it or just?
Yeah, most of the cards, so the power cards, the communication cards, so it wasn't getting enough power and it wasn't communicating it back to the PLC. The PLC was not able to calculate and figure out the dosages, so lamps weren't coming on or lamps were burning up, cards were burning up. We actually had some arcing happening inside the control cabinet that was all related to this. We're about 80% right now. We've been able to reduce our fecal numbers, but there's a little, we've got a little ways to go still. There's still some communication issues and still some other pieces of equipment that we're finding as we go through this process that are related to this. We had 18 fans actually burn off all at one time, which I don't have an explanation for as to why because the power supply seems to be in okay condition because we've replaced the 18 fans and they're working correctly.
One of the, maybe a related question is, it looks like our maintenance cap expenditures was exceeded starting in May and June. Sounds like a lot of things have had to be replaced here recently.
Correct. I mean, a lot of those were, have been components, the influence dish pump and we have the, as well as the PLC, that are contributing factors to the increase in flows as well as some of the power quality issues that we've had and we've experienced from DTE. This UV system, kind of a half and half, not really half and half, but increased costs towards the end of June and then there's going to be additional costs obviously into July into this next fiscal year.
So is DTE assisting in getting this root cause fixed so we don't have the same thing in behind us?
Oh, working with Jeff Talonson, who's the primary switching, and then we work with the DT substation to try and get some kind of early warning detection system. Child's Lake, that new substation is, was put online, I believe, at the end of last year. It was okay for the first month or so, and then they had some major switching problems where they weren't able to open all three legs and do a proper throw over, so it led to either a single phase or a two-phase condition, if you're familiar with it. It's getting better. Since the 28th, thankfully, we haven't had any or been able, we haven't monitored anything different. I have installed a power quality meter on our primary, our primary power in our MCC room, and we haven't seen as many SAGs and voltages, you know. So we're making some progress.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks, Matt. Tim? The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which event the items will be removed from the consent agenda and added to the regular agenda at the end of unfinished or new business. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, thank you. There's no unfinished business, which takes us to new business. First item under new business is the, is consideration of the mayoral appointment of Amanda Aboush to the Wicksum Downtown Development Authority with a term to expire June 30, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Amanda is here tonight. Want to come up and introduce yourself, Amanda?
Sure. I'm Amanda Aboush. I'm very excited to be able to contribute to the city of Wicksum. From what I can see, you all have done a fine job of making the city great, and I care a lot about the success of this city.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Amanda, for coming tonight and thanks for volunteering.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On the application, I was noticing there's no address on here, she didn't state her address there, so maybe she should put her address on for the record.
Do you want to give your business address for Mr. Kennedy?
Okay. We're actually, just right here, it's 49175 Pontiac Trail, Wicksum, 48393.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration of a contract with Trivium Racing, Inc., for timing services associated with a 5K and 10K race to be held on May 4, 2019, and allow the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. Mr. Gashen.
Just less regarding the contract, as much as I know, last year, kind of around the Highgate, Loon Lake Elementary area, we had people running on either side of Loon Lake Road, so I'm not sure if that's us that makes the course and signage or if that's them, but having that address.
We had an overzealous volunteer that thought he could help out and he changed a couple of the signs. So he said if we put him back up there this, next year, he won't do that.
Put him in a different spot.
No, I think consistency is good.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We have a motion for consideration of a contract with Trivium Racing, Inc., for timing services associated with the 5K and 10K race to be held on May 4, 2019, and allow the mayor and clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is a recommendation to approve a sanitary sewer maintenance agreement with Anthem at Tribute Association located in Bluefield Hills, Michigan, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Discussion. Tim?
Mr. Mayor? Before we start, I just wanted, for disclosure, I do own property with Anthem at Tribute, and if you recall, the last time this came up, I consulted with the city attorney. He said there's, because there's no financial gain to be made by me, and I'm welcome to stay here, but if it's council's decision, I will leave.
I prefer you stay.
I like to stay.
Thanks. Tim, do you have a report for us?
So this report, the sanitary sewer, when constructed, they needed to cross under a storm sewer that had already been existing, and so they created basically a siphon, so the sewer drops down below the storm and then comes back up, and in that, in that process, the water fills up and then flushes every, every time there's enough water to get through it. On occasion, underneath as a belly, if you will, it needs to be cleaned in case there's grease or something like that, so we want to make sure that we don't have any backups further upstream from there, so we'll do, every six months, we'll do a sewer cleaning, just jet that out to make sure everything is clean going through there. And because it benefits that particular Anthem at Tribute, it benefits them, we'll be invoicing them for that cost, and they will, they, this agreement ensures that as, as the homeowners' associations come through and come and go, that this agreement will stay in place so that we can maintain their source.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, I have a, I'm sorry.
And just in the contract, I'm not seeing where it necessarily called out the frequency of doing that and handling the invoicing.
It was two times per year, I think is what, what it said on the top there.
Twice a year, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Twice.
And then just, what's the term of the agreement?
The term?
Yeah, or is it just perpetual?
Perpetual.
And if the costs go up?
Then it's perpetual, it's twice a year. But we won't, we won't be cleaning it more than twice per year, not more than. If we need to clean it, then we'll end up cleaning it for the sewer cost of the main, but, you know, they cover the costs twice a year.
It is kind of capped, if you will, by regular charges that the association could experience if they contracted out for it, so it's not a blank check for the city. It just allows for it to increase over time, but it's checked by that control.
We'll be utilizing the same sewer contractors, the sewer cleaner contractors that, that we always use for, well, as long as their agreement stays in place, so.
Anyone else?
Good point.
We have a motion to approve the sanitary sewer maintenance agreement with Anthem at Tribute Association located in Bluefield Hills, Michigan, and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreement. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thanks, Tim. Next on the agenda is new business number four, which is recommendation to accept a bid from DeAngelo Brothers Construction of Farmington, Michigan, to install water mains for interconnecting the water system for a price not to exceed $263,559. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Tim, you want to?
Sure. So, so DeAngelo Brothers Construction is the, is the city's water main and sewer main installer, and they do all our taps right now. We, they have a, if you remember, a couple of months back, we, we updated their contract for, or extended their contract for another two years, and with that pricing, they had a pricing for underground work for, for this, what, the tunnel and water main to go underneath I-96. We primarily wanted to get that in as soon as possible, and our concerns were making sure that MDOT was satisfied with the contractor, and bidding it out is, is difficult because there's a lot of risk involved in that. So we worked with HRC and DeAngelo's to try and get the best price. I think we've, we've got that narrowed down, and I think it's to the best advantage of the city to have, to have them do it. And then additionally, we utilize their pricing from Oakland County again for that Wall Street water main, which will go from the water tower back into Wall Street. So we, we get our loop for Wall Street, and we will extend underneath I-96 so that eventually we will have a loop there as well. So we'll have two mains coming south of I-96.
Questions? Mr. Gashen.
Thank you. So this is just putting the water main in under I-96, and looking at the map, it kind of, I'm not sure if that's the, the new, is it Wilson Marine?
Yes.
That's the parking lot, it's just ending there, we're not running it to the road?
Correct, correct. At this point, we're, we're just getting it across because that's the major, that's the major stumbling block, if you will, for, for the area. Now we're looking forward to the developments along, along 12 Mile, and we, we think that very soon, we will be able to have that interconnected all the way back to, to what, Taco Bell or Sam's Way.
Is there a line currently that runs along the road on the other side or?
No, no, the closest water main there is 12 Mile at this point, but, you know, we're, from what we're seeing, it's very close to getting some development. This, this is one step forward to making sure that happens.
I, I know when we initially started talking about this, someone, I think, had floated the idea of special assessment district in that, for those properties on that side. Are we just paying this straight out of capital improvement and eating the cost? We're not looking into, into that anymore?
No, yeah, we're, this is a capital improvement that's been in the 10-year plan, and we just kept pushing it out for almost 20 years, to be honest. So we're, we're thinking that the development in that area is going to get the rest of that loop soon, and that's, that's what we're, we're looking forward to.
We're expecting this water main to facilitate that economic development and make it easier to happen, and allow us to get some financial benefit from those additional tax dollars that would come with new development.
Yep, I don't, I don't disagree. I think it was just when we were first starting to talk about the extension and how to fund it, someone had thrown out special assessments for those lots.
If, if the lots, if the lots themselves don't, don't generate the, the water mains that we're expecting, then yes, we would, we could consider that to make sure that loop exists in the next few years. Yep, that would be the next step.
So then creating it to go, to finish the infrastructure, basically. We're not concerned with it right now, but if no development happens and we want to finish the loop, then we'll get it more.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Resnick.
On the, I mentioned they have to do a horizontal bore, make a tunnel underneath the freeway. Is there any traffic disruption when that work is done?
Typically, no. There, there are certain distances and they, they have to track it, and that's where the MDOT factor we're concerned with. We're, we're pushing, or we're recommending an HTPE line going under, as far as I know right now, and that, that would be a, a single line going through, it wouldn't be a casing at this point, so those, those are a little stronger when, when boring, so that's, yeah, that's what, that's what we're planning to do under there.
And then the end of the Wall Street proposed section, that, they're just going to dig that out?
Yep.
Lay in a normal?
Yep.
How big is that pipe?
That's 12 inches.
12, okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Tim. Couple little ones. You said that the, it's, it has a little trouble getting bits because it's a risky project. You mean, it's dangerous?
It's, it is, it's dangerous, but then also when, when you're impacting or going under, under I-96 like that, we want, we want no, no closures.
It makes MDOT nervous. It makes MDOT nervous, and then it makes contractors nervous because if they've not done it before, they're potentially damaging a freeway if they were to do that properly, and that's why they want somebody that's very, very, very experienced with that.
I got you. Okay, thanks for the clarification on that.
There's a lot of few, few contractors that would do that anyway, and.
Well, I'm glad we got one. And then the other thing, in our notes here, we, we speak about it being a potentially spur economic growth. Is that just, just that we're getting some improved infrastructure, or is there, I don't know, is there more, I guess elaborate on spurring economic growth for that area?
From, what is it, Stingers, Stingers to on the, on the Wicksum side of 12 Mile, there's, there's only two developments. We got from the farm end, there's, what is that, yeah, a child daycare center, and really that's all there is along there other than Wilson Marine, and there's, you know, we're thinking that there's three properties in there that will, will go in if we can spur this along.
Okay, so infrastructure will be there.
Yes, well, yes. The sanitary, the sanitary sewer already exists there, so, you know, the next thing is the water, and that's what we need.
That's all, and thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept a bid from DeAngelo Brothers Construction of Farmington, Michigan, to install water mains for interconnecting the water system for a price not to exceed $263,559. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
And new business item number five, recommendation to accept Hubbell Rothenclark's proposal for construction engineering services for the Wall Street water main installation in an amount not to exceed $11,140. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So, so this particular one, when we, when we first requested to have HRC design this project and work through those things, we had just the I-96 part portion of that, and based on the pricing that we got back, we, we tacked on the Wall Street project because we, we needed that as well, and it was within a two-year period, so we wanted to do that along with this. HRC, because of the scenario, was able to design it with what they, what they had with the I-96 project, so they were saving money on the I-96 project and they got the design part there. The only issue was the construction engineering to make sure that, you know, everything is installed properly on Wall Street, and then there's some, there's some easement items there that they're going to help us with, so it, it leaves a shortfall of $11,140.
Okay, any questions? We have a motion and a second to accept Hubbell Rothenclark's proposal for construction engineering services for Wall Street water main installation in an amount not to exceed $11,140. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the second call to the public, and I'll just reread the, the second call to the public, I think we've got somebody that came in and missed my first reading. The public shall address the council during the call to the public, which shall include, be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence and again immediately after new business. The first call to the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority vote of the council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves in their place of residence and shall state their reason for addressing the council. All comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. So we already have a guest.
Russ Meredith, I live at 378 Fletcher, and first thing I wanted to do is thank Police Department, Department of Public Works. They're conducting a traffic safety study on Fletcher. We've had some historic problems with people mistaking it for Detroit Dragway, and we really appreciate what they're doing, and hopefully be able to come up with a solution to control some of that issues. So I just want to say thank you to them in front of you guys so that you're aware of the appreciation my neighborhood has for this because it's been an issue, a lot of folks are really appreciative of what they're doing. Second, while my wife and I have only lived here in Wicksum for just over a year, we really, really like the city and have decided it's really a place we'd like to stay, and keeping the concept of staying, I think it was two means ago, Councilman Resnick brought up the notion of a columbarium at the cemetery, and when it comes to that point in time, my wife and I decide we'd probably need to downsize from where we are now, so maybe one and a half, two cubic feet would probably work. So we're wondering if the council could request or suggest to the Cemetery Commission that they look into the feasibility of establishing a columbarium at the cemetery here in Wicksum. I think it could be done, keeping with the facility, it's a beautiful cemetery, and it might open more spaces for people who are inclined to downsize at that point in their life, or after life.
Thank you.
And I think for tonight, that'll be all, thank you.
Thanks. Just a comment, I guess, on, on that. You know, I, I would agree, I think it's probably a, a good idea, it's probably something that should be addressed by the administration rather than the Cemetery Commission because they only meet annually, so it might be a good thing to look into. I mean, I think it's.
Yeah, I was, I wasn't sure where to take it, so I figured I, I guess.
I think that was kind of what Mr. Resnick was hoping for to begin with, I think, was, am I wrong?
And there was, there was another resident that was interested in getting it started, and again, Ed Lynch, from the Lynch family, has offered to fly up whenever the meeting is to make a full presentation of the costs involved in the design features of your downsize.
If you can take a nook in there, we'll be just, it's great forever. Thanks, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else like to come and address the council this evening on any item on their Seeing no one, I'll close the second call to the public. Next item on the agenda is city manager's comments. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so a couple of items from my city manager update that I'll mention. Camp 911 is going to be running from July 30 to August 3, and we of course invite mayor and council to participate, attend the graduation ceremony on that Friday, August 3 at 11:00 a.m.
a.m. Congratulations to one of our new employees, Monica Raditz, and her husband Zachary, who welcomed baby Lily here in the last few weeks, so we congratulate them and wish them all the best. The clerk's office has some information in there about being open for extra hours due to the primary election on August 7th. Friday, August 3rd, 9 to 4 p.m., it'll be open for the purpose of accepting declaration and intent forms from write-in candidates seeking precinct delegate positions, and then Saturday, August 4th, again, 9 a.m. to 2 p.m., for the purpose of issuing and accepting absentee voter ballot applications. And then we have some workaversaries that are in there for mayor and council's information as well. Talk about it, at the longer end of the service spectrum, Marilyn Stamper, our finance director, 21 years, and Louis McCag of our police department with 22 years, so congratulations to them and all the people with workaversaries here this month, so. Those are the only things I was looking to cover, Your Honor, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to do my best to answer them.
Thank you. Mr. Smiley has a question?
Thanks. Mr. Brown, will you, will you tell, tell us the story you told me about Walt Lake's council meeting last week?
Right.
With, unless it's?
No, absolutely not.
It might be on television.
Right, it might be, no, they actually, I asked that question, it's not going to be on TV, so. I did attend a council meeting with the City of Walt Lake there last week because there were a couple of items on there related to the development of the Michigan Airline Trail that is, of course, of interest to us. The city of Wixom is serving as the lead agency, the application initiator, as well as the recipient of grant funding for that project, so we made an application to the Michigan Department of Transportation for a TAP grant, a Transportation Alternatives Program grant, and then other grant fundings that we made application for and we've experienced success with, and as part of that, eventually, the city will be required to, if you will, front some money on projects, and we had prior agreements with the individual communities involved with the trail that said that they would provide their portion of the costs. The thing that made me a little bit uneasy was it didn't provide for how and when, and I was concerned with how and when as the representative for the city of Wixom, so we asked for a new cost participation agreement to be drawn up. It had been considered at the Walt Lake council meeting prior to that, and it had not been passed, so it was on the agenda again, and I wanted to provide some additional information on that, why the city of Wixom was asking for it, and things of that nature, and we were fortunate to have that cost participation agreement get passed, so we're, we're satisfied and happy with that, and that provides that when the city of Wixom advances funding for those kind of purposes, that the two other communities will pay their portion of those expenses upon request by the city of Wixom within 30 days, so at least provides a date certain on it and provides us more assurance that we're going to get it in a timely fashion. So that's the one thing that was on the agenda, the other one was related to longer-term funding of the trail costs for the city of Walt Lake, and they ended up agreeing amongst themselves, if you will, as a council, to put a millage before the voters in November to raise, I believe it was .5 mils, that would raise a certain number of dollars, that would fund costs associated with the airline trail development for them, and we wish them the best on that, and hopefully they'll get that established revenue source for it, but those were the two items that Walt Lake acted on at that council meeting.
I used to add a few more things that.
Please do.
I read, or, I, you know, that, that agreement passed four and three, very close, so I'd like to think that you, you may have, you know, made that happen by going there that evening and, you know.
I hope I didn't hurt.
Kind of leading our case, and I appreciate you, you spending your evening doing that.
Yeah, the, by the way, just as an individual point of interest for you guys, that was, when I left, it was 10:15, and they still had several items on their new business agenda that they were, they were addressing, so, actually, it was unfinished business, so. Their, their meetings tend to run a little later, at least that one did.
Well, we're going to try to avoid that.
Yeah.
Pleasure to update, and thank you for your efforts there.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is council comments. Mr. Smiley?
I did that part already. Just a few things, the Hot Blues and Barbecue was a very successful event, beautiful night, and I appreciate, I'm sure we all appreciate, the, the work of Deanna, McGee, Melissa Harrison, and Kathy Vanegas, and many of other of our staff that, you know, made the, the rib judging contests and the whole night run, run smoothly, and congrats to the winners of that contest. Primary election two weeks from tonight, I encourage any and all voters to participate. You mentioned Camp 11, so all I'll say is that my son loved it last year, I, I highly recommend it. And finally, happy birthday to Mr. Brown, who yesterday celebrated one of those birthdays where the first digit changes as well as the second one, so happy birthday, daylights.
Thank you. Have a century mark, I'm not afraid to say.
Is Ridge going to sing?
No.
Motion to force the mayor's.
That'd be a good one.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Gassell?
Thank you, I don't have any comments tonight.
Mr. Leader?
I have no comments either, but happy birthday.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy?
Happy birthday, and thanks for going over to Walt Lake and doing that, over and above, and appreciate it, I'm all set with that, thank you.
Mr. Resnick?
Happy birthdays.
I'll, I'll take them all, thank you, I appreciate it.
Also, you know, Hot Blues and Barbecue was a great event, Deanna and your team worked, that was fantastic, just to look at the crowd and, and the fun that people were having and dancing, and it was really nice. We've had great weather this entire summer for these concerts here, so it's been super compared to the two years prior. Also, want to thank Police Department, I, I see again a noticeable effect on the TSI initiative, I don't know what the, hopefully, next meeting, you'll have some more stats for us, but I think it's been effective. I see the, the red and blue lights flashing at different times of the day in those areas of, you know, Loon Lake Road, Charms, Maple, so it's good to see. Also, I, you know, a little bit of sadness that, you know, the, the holiday market is going to be going away, I know that, you know, the Parks and Rec Commission, they've been, you know, struggling with this for some years, and, and again, when we envisioned this about 15 years ago, we thought we could turn it into a world-class event, similar to what, you know, Birmingham actually started theirs about the same time we did, and they've turned theirs into quite the world-class event with over 50 vendors and a lot of participation from the area businesses, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm happy to see it, you know, at least maybe get a little redirected and changed up so we can get some more participation, and, you know, every, any project without a champion is doomed to failure, and hopefully we can get a champion when East Retail builds out, the rest of the VCA builds out, to maybe reestablish a world-class winter event for the city, because we, we have a great spring event with Founder's Day, we have a great summer event with the Light the Night, great fall event with Panther Hunt, so I'll be sad to see the winter event go, and everybody already knows that I was one of the champions, along with Karen, on the Parks and Rec Commission, to try to establish this in the city, and at that time, Chicago and Kitchener, Ontario were the only two other nearby cities that had such an event, so we'll see it redevelop and hopefully reconfigure into something that we can all be proud of again, so. With that, everybody get up there and vote.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Beagle?
Thank you. Just to remind everybody again about Camp 911, the Fire Department, it's a great program, we got a lot of work anniversaries, thank you for all the, the workers celebrating a work anniversary, ranges from one year to 22 years. Thanks to Amanda Habush for planning up and volunteering for the chair committee that she's on, we appreciate that. Deanna, thanks to you, and Melissa Harrison, and Cindy Longville and Kathy Vanegas for outstanding event, Blues and Barbecue, I think if we passed the hat, we probably could have got enough money to have Big Ray play for another two hours, and everyone would have stayed there, but it was a great tie hat by all, and you guys are doing a knockout job on the concerts this year, and happy birthday, Mr. Brown, and.
Thank you, sir.
And if anybody's been watching the news tonight, there's some, a big announcement was made, and it's been all over the news about a water park coming to Wixom, and it's kind of exciting, and now we're going to have two gateways to our city coming in off of Beck Road and off of Wixom Road, it's pretty exciting and cool, and can't wait for everything to start happening, thanks.
Thank you. Well, Chad, I don't have anything else to add, I just, I guess we would echo Deputy Mayor's comments, and I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Go home.